Welcome to the April 1 Board of Finance Meeting. This is a public hearing. My name, for those of you who don't know, is Houston Putnam Lowry. It's 7:00. It's also my birthday. There you go.
Birthday, thank you.
Thank you. So apparently now I'm allowed to have an excuse for being grumpy because I really am old. So the order of the presentation tonight will be, I'm calling on Don Hamas, the Chair of the Town Council. Then I call upon Deb Schut, who will then introduce the Superintendent of Schools, who we each do their presentation. Then I will do the overview of the Board of Finance presentation, which is responsible for assembling the two budgets. But I figured I'd take a slight liberty, and you may be bored, or you may not be bored, on what the process is. The process is, we take each of the various budgets and we combine it to an overall town budget. Then what we do is we say, okay, this is our budget. Make up a number, $1 million. Sorry, guys, it's a lot more than $1 million. And then we have to allocate that over the grand list. Now, the budget includes not just current expenditures, but includes what we anticipate as a capital budget. It includes a reserve for expenses, including what I would call a rainy day fund, to preserve our current bond rating, which is pretty good, debt service. And then contrary to the federal government, we are not allowed to do deficit spending. So if, once we figure out the budget, including those, you know, the capital expenditures, current expenditures, debt service, and the reserve, shall we say, turn the very large crank, and we know what comes out at the end. So we don't tax people for the fun of it, because I am a taxpayer. I don't like it much myself, but we have to, and we can engage in deficit spending. So each of the town departments and the Board of Ed departments assemble their desired budget, which then comes up to the town manager or the Superintendent of Schools, who comes up with a combined budget, which is then proposed to each of the governing bodies, which then take a look at it, and then it gets sent to the Board of Finance. And we are the ones who are responsible for proposing the final budget. It's not happening tonight. This is a discussion, and we're going to take questions from the audience later on. But the process is fairly mechanical. So if you want to cut something, we can reduce taxes. But then if you want a service, then we have to make sure we have it in the taxes. So I hope that people understand that. And, you know, we were incredibly lucky this past couple of years, because we got a lot of ARPA funds, did a lot of road repairs, a lot of deferred maintenance, a lot of extra stuff that we did. And so it's up to us to continue to be good stewards and maintain the process. So hopefully that is relatively clear. So, Don, you want to come up and introduce everybody who is on the Town Council and tell us about the Town Council's budget? Thank you.
Thank you, Houston. Thank you for the overview. My name is Dan Paul Hamas, if you don't know me. But I appreciate it anyway. Yeah, so, you know, good evening. Thank you all for coming. A lot of hard work has gone into the budget, goes into the budget, from the council members to staff, now turning it over to the Board of Finance. So I truly appreciate everybody for showing up, for being interested, and being part of this process. So first of all, I want to thank some of my fellow council members for their work, Barb Osziellos here, Anthony Weber, Aaron Barthel, and Margaret Bratton. Other key people you may hear from tonight are Brandon Robertson, the Town Manager, Grace Tiesey, Assistant Town Manager, and Tom Distazio, also in the back, our Director of Finance. Give the next slide, please. So this slide here shows the total proposed budget for fiscal year '25. The Board of Education will speak to their funding request, not including the operating budget of the Board of Ed. The town sewer capital and debt service budgets total $43.8 million. This equates to an increase of 2.6 million, or 6.35% of the current year budget of $41.2 million. The increase to the town operating budget, not including the sewers, capital and debt service budgets, is 4.25%, or 1.27 million. Those sewers, you know, of course, come from, are paid for by, increases to the sewer usage are paid through sewer use funds and sewer use fees. Capital is a little bit of a mixed bag this year, too, because we have a lot of grant funding. We'll come back to that in a few slides, but you'll notice a fairly large bump in the capital budget this year. Again, this is, you'll see a lot of this is through the grant funding, and we'll break this down over the next couple of slides. Can I get the next slide, please? So at the very base of our process, the mission remains the same. We want to provide quality town services at a reasonable cost to all citizens and taxpayers. Next slide. So the Council's three key objectives, as we review the proposed fiscal year '25 operating and capital budgets, are shown here. First of all, we want to maintain the capital budget funding levels. The emphasis here is on road improvements, as well as municipal buildings and grounds and school facilities. This includes a general fund capital budget increase of 1.2 million year-over-year. There's about a $1.7 million, there's about $1.7 million budgeted for road improvements, funded through state grants, ARPA funding, and an assignment on general fund balance in the amount of $1.4 million. The capital budget for education facilities is $890,000. Includes funding for projects requested by the Board of Education. The fiscal year '25 budget also includes an increase of about $1,500 in our debt service payments. We usually consider this as a single category with capital, debt service and capital, and this represents about $7.9 million, which is stable year-over-year. Our next objective is to sufficiently fund our long-term liabilities. Our defined benefit plans were closed to new employees in 1997. This budget provides 100% of the annual required contribution for these plans to be funded. We're also budgeting $1.78 million for OPEB, other post-employment benefits. These cover a portion of the actuarially determined contribution to the pre-fund, to pre-fund for future retiree healthcare costs, as well as a contribution for current retiree healthcare costs. Our final strategic objective is ensuring that we properly fund our core services. We continue to focus on delivering high-quality core government services with a focus on public safety. We continue to contract with private vendors where efficient and effective. Some of these services include street sweeping, grounds maintenance, janitorial services, IT services, catch basin cleaning, snow removal for various town properties, field irrigation, maintenance of the field irrigation, capital. Okay, so next slide, thank you. So here we have the main budget drivers. As mentioned earlier, the town operating budget has a proposed total increase of 4.25%, or $1.27 million. The operating budget consists of three categories: personal services, services and supplies, and capital outlay. The personal services and wages comprise about 75% of the town's operating budget. The town of Avon is a service organization, so it shouldn't be any surprise that the primary budget driver is people. Our increases in wages and salaries for this year is $574,000. We don't have any new positions proposed. Cost drivers include general wage increases, step increases, and increase in the total hours budgeted for the part-time library employees. And we also have an increase in election worker payout to account for the early voting in the presidential election year. Let's see, we also have an increase in defined benefits, which is $181,000. The defined benefit plan is closed to new employees, and it closed to new employees in 1997. And as of, as of the writing of this budget, only three active employees remain on the plan. So based on current projections, this plan will be fully funded in fiscal year '30 with a significant reduction in the funding requirement in fiscal year '29. As far as medical insurance goes, we have an increase of $176,000, includes medical insurance, medical insurance waivers, HSA employer contributions. This increase is mitigated by 19 employees that opt out of the plan through the town's health insurance waiver program, as well as reductions to the value of the waiver for certain employee groups, and increased participation in the town's high deductible health plan rather than the traditional OAP. We also have an increase in computer operations and support services. For this year, it's $85,210. This increase is due primarily to increased support services and hardware and software provided by Cooperative Systems, which is our managed services provider, and other third-party vendors. You know, this is, this kind of increase, you've seen inflationary increases over the past few years. This year is no different. In fact, I'd say the common theme this year is contractual, contractual increases through our, through our services. Next slide is the capital budget projects. Our capital, our total capital budget is $6.55 million. The capital budget includes items with a minimum value of $20,000 and a useful life of more than five years. The general fund capital budget for all funds has increased by $1.19 million when compared to fiscal year '24. You can find a more detailed breakdown of this on page 19 in your handout. Highlights include $1.69 million for road improvements, $890,000 for Board of Ed projects, $620,000 for the replacement of the Tillotson Road Bridge, $460,000 for replacement fire department vehicles, $450,000 for upgrades to the public works facility, $365,000 for replaced sidewalks along portions of West Avon and Scoville Roads, $250,000 for the reconstruction of Cedar Brook Road, $200,000 for design work related to improved Avon Volunteer Fire Department facilities, $200,000 for replacement DPW vehicles, and $162,000 for replacement police cruisers. So you notice on this slide, there are stars, and on page 19 of your handout, there's footnotes. These all indicate items that are being covered for funds outside of the tax levy. And these include $205,000 in sewer projects. Again, these are projects that are funded through sewer use fees. Also included in the CIP and shown here, but funded through other grants or special revenue funds, are $906,000 in ARPA projects. The reason you see so much of that this year is we need, we need to allocate those, we need to allocate the ARPA funds by the end of the year. 182,000 dollars in projects funded by the Fisher Meadows, Fisher Old Farms Special Revenue Fund. We have $269,000 funded by state grants. None of these funding sources impact the tax levy, so also it's important to note that the general fund capital budget is offset by the use of $1.4 million, an assignment on general fund balance for road improvements that was made possible due to positive operating but results from last year. Next slide. This graph is the existing approved and projected debt service. And by projected, I mean unapproved or subject to change. You can see it, kind of small writing over there, this, talking about the, yeah, so this does include the purchase of the fire apparatus and the public safety communication replacement project. So this year, our debt service budget is $2.8 million. It's a decrease of $1,500 from fiscal year '24. When considered as a single category, the debt service and general fund capital is $7.9 million. As you may know, both Moody's Investor Service and Standard &amp; Poor's have reviewed and reaffirmed Avon's AAA credit rating. Back in May 2020 was the last time this happened. This rating ensures that the town continues to receive the most competitive rates possible based on currently approved projects, all outstanding general obligation debt is retired by 2035. But of course, we will surely be adding new projects in the future between Old Farms Road and fire facilities, are two that come to mind. Next slide, please. So the Town Council and the Board of Education continue to encourage intra-local cooperation. This slide illustrates just a few of the areas where we collaborate. In addition to cooperative ventures between the town and the Board of Education, both organizations also participate in a host of regional cooperative programs. Next slide, please. Again, here's the high-level summary of the budget. As we've seen, we're adding really little to nothing regarding new services or new capital projects. The majority of these increases reflect contractual ones, subject to the same inflation we've all experienced in our personal lives, or in the case of the CIP increases due to spending down of grant funding to meet deadlines. Next slide. So these are the next steps in the budget process. So again, join us on Wednesday night at 7:00. We'll have the Board of Finance workshops. This is where we work together with the Board of Finance to figure out what, what an acceptable mill rate increase is and what adjustments need to be made to, to reach that. And then again, the town meeting is on May 6th, and don't forget to vote in the referendum on May 15th. The last slide here, we do have a lot of information online, including, there'll be some, you know, some tax calculators to see what you're, what kind of tax increase you're looking at relative to the proposed budget increases are. So please, you know, check out the, check out the website, like us on Facebook, and continue to stay informed.
Thank you, Dan. One of the prerogatives of the Chair is to comment briefly. People should note that we are working towards fully funding our future obligations. There's nothing worse than having an obligation that you haven't funded, so all of a sudden, instead of paying for it bit by bit by bit, it comes due all at once. So we are in the process of doing that for post-employment benefits and for the pension plan. It's, it's really close for the pension plan, and it's, well, as Dan said, 2030, so that's six years we will get done for the post-employment benefits. I would also urge people, when they double-check the tax increase that affects them, that you also remember, most of you pay insurance along with it. Well, in Avon, it's not likely to be much of a problem, but a lot of places are facing huge increases in insurance. So don't blame me for your insurance increases, but do double-check on it. And I do tell people to, if you disagree as to how your house was appraised, there is a process for that, and if you contact the town hall, that can be worked on. So the next person I'm going to introduce is Deb Schut, who is the Board of Ed Chair. I would give a couple of precatory remarks. One, the town does not control how the Board of Ed spends money. We can say, here's the pot, allocate it as you see fit. Now, we can't shrink the pot so much that it violates state law, so there's certain minimum amounts that you have to pay the Board of Ed. Luckily, we are comfortably past those minimums. So the Board of Ed will get a pot, and they get to allocate it, and they get to reallocate it. Normally goes through the Board of Finance if the town wants to reallocate something, but in this case, the Board of Ed gets to do it. So that's a lot of responsibility. And Chair Schut, would you care to come up?
Thank you, Houston. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
So it's always my honor to be able to introduce my board, as well as staff, that professionally developed this budget. We work very hard on this. We take it very seriously. This is a big responsibility, as Houston pointed out, but we also recognize the reputation that Avon has and the education that people have come to expect. And so we try to maintain that and make everyone proud, and that's why we, I think, draw young families to continue to come and enjoy what we have to offer. So I would like to acknowledge my board members that are in the room, if you don't mind standing and just turning so people know. So I have my Vice Chair, Thage Singh, Secretary Jeff Fleishman, Suzanne Zakaris, Lynn Katz, Nicole Russo. I know Chris Campbell is joining us virtually. We also have Sarah Thompson and Ramesh Kandipili. I am privileged to also acknowledge that we have our Business Manager, Susan Russo, with us this evening. We couldn't do this without her. And of course, it's always a privilege to be able to introduce our Superintendent, Dr. Bridget Heston Cardamola.
And thank you, board members, for being here with us tonight, both virtually and in person. This is a long process that, as you know, begins in the calendar year before we're even here tonight. So this budget started being developed last year around the same time as we are right now, just as we're already starting, even though we're still working this evening and through May on the '24-'25 budget. It really takes us more than a year to develop the coming fiscal year. So I appreciate all of the work that you have put in thus far as the Board, and of course, you, Susan, who is my right hand, clearly, in the budget process. If you could move that forward for me, please. Thank you. So every meeting that we begin and every activity in the schools, we start with what our mission statement is for our students, faculty, staff, and teachers, which is to inspire each student a joy and a passion for learning, commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. With that in mind, we move forward into our budget process every year, and we've tweaked it every year, at least since I started with you toward the end of the fiscal year '17-'18. First budget that I worked through with you here in Avon was '18-'19. And we've gotten a little bit better and a little more efficient with doing it every year. But we, as we start, as Houston mentioned earlier, is with the ground level in the schools. We start with our principals, our teachers, our staff members, and department heads, and we ask what the top priorities are in their mind for this budget, and how those budgets support our strategic plan, which is called our Blueprint for Excellence. And as you saw, Dan, give the strategic objectives for the town budget. On the Board side, the strategic objectives are obviously to continue making progress toward our strategic goals, to maintain whatever current programming we have in place that meets student needs, and of course, to create a fiscally responsible budget that makes use of all of the grant funding possible, and continuing not to create a fiscal cliff in the coming year. So as you heard at the beginning of the meeting, there were, there was quite a bit of ARPA funding that went out to towns and to school districts over the course of the pandemic and just after. We worked diligently in the school and the Board side to utilize those funds in a way that would not set us up for a cliff and failure in the future. So you won't see much from us tonight that is recouping those funds, because we worked to utilize it as we went along without creating something that Avon taxpayers had to continue forward when the federal and state funding were out, ran out, excuse me. So this budget tonight, as you see under the last bullet there, was finally approved on January 16th by the Board of Education, and we submitted it to the Town Council on February 2nd to be considered. If you could just go to the next one for me. I'd like to start, when we're here at the hearing, just a few highlights of the things that we are doing, the bang for your buck, so to speak, from the town of Avon, some of what we do with the funds we do receive. And we're very proud of the accomplishments, obviously, of our students and teachers. This past year, we had 15 National Merit Scholarship finalists and commendations. That's one of the most of any high school in the United States of America. 90% of our class of 2023 moved on to post-secondary education. About 6% more of them went on to the armed services, and 4% went on to a form of job and/or career training. We had 26 students named All-State and All-Conference athletes from the high school last year. We had 136 All-Academic Team Honors for the fall and 104 for the winter season, which is a huge amount of our students being named as Academic Team Honors. We had two CAS, CIIC, which is the Connecticut Association of Schools and the Connecticut Interstate Athletic Conference, Scholar-Athlete Award winners. Our boys tennis team earned their third consecutive state championship. And I won't read the rest to you, but one of the things I think we were most excited about, besides our SIT scores continuing to rise and being the fifth highest in the state for math, were our, is our AMS student, who in conjunction with the town, won the hashtag Low Cool Government Scholarship from the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities for an essay written. Really did a beautiful job, and we're grateful to the Town Council and the Town Manager for assisting us in providing that opportunity through the Connecticut Council of Municipalities. Next slide, please. So straight to the numbers. This is a comparison from last year to this year, and I'll bring you to the bottom line, because generally speaking, that's what everyone cares about in general, but particularly by the time we're here at the public hearing. Our overall increase this year is higher than we have seen in the time that I have been here putting the budget together, at least with you, at 4.97%. You'll see, as we move through tonight, the majority of that is related to some drivers that are difficult for us to do anything with. If you could move to the next slide for me. Give you some of them here. So in terms of fixed costs, and I always put that in quotation marks or italuses, because I know that people have different definitions of what fixed costs are. Obviously, fixed costs, to some degree, are things like utilities, but in the world of education, there are other fixed costs, such as special education costs, that we exercise as much control over as possible, but given some of what we do and must do for our students, they are driven a bit by need and less by us in controlling the spending. So when you look overall, these are the top drivers of this year's budget. Health insurance, as you've already heard from the Town Council and from the Board of Finance Chair, this is continuing to fund the health insurance at the level which has been recommended. It is more about that than it is about claims at this point, and that alone is a $938,301 increase. A 1% increase on our budget year-over-year is approximately $660,000. So with health insurance alone, we are nearly 1.5% above where we were last year by funding the health insurance, as we have been requested to. All of our other benefits, Social Security, payments, disability, and so on, those total about $105,000 increase. Transportation, $76,583. That is our transportation contract for the entire school district, which we negotiate the contractual increases of at three-to-five-year increments. That is a 1.41% increase in the transportation contract over last year, which is an excellent increase, given what most have been charged statewide. We've been lucky to have negotiated that with specialty here in Avon. And then software, $188,118. These, this isn't a nice-to-have, this is a need-to-have in terms, again, of budget drivers, because this is the software, numerous versions of the software that are required for us to run the school district and complete state reporting. Power School, for example, that generate this increase. And statewide and really nationwide, we've seen an increase in software prices and in subscription prices after the pandemic. Many things were done for free during the pandemic, because everyone was virtual, and some parts of it were state and federally funded to help local cities and towns. However, as soon as those funds ran out, most software and internet companies raised the prices considerably, some as much as 30% on required subscriptions. Next, on to special education, $517,146 of our increase is related to special education costs. Again, that's an, that in and of itself is, again, almost 1% increase. Special education tuition, which means tuition that the town of Avon, through the Board, must pay to must pay to other entities to educate some students who require services above and beyond what can be provided in the public school system. That has been raised currently by a hundred and thirty-two thousand three hundred and fourteen. We've had some additional expenses in terms of equipment. In contracted services, contracted services for special education can be things such as occupational therapists, physical therapists that students require. We have our own in district, but at times there are above and beyond needs for students. Nursing services, for example, a student at school who might need a one-on-one nurse for all or part of the time would fall under contracted services for special education. And on the bottom, you see a very large increase related to special education transportation, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. In part, that is due to the need for two more wheelchair-accessible vans, each of which costs just about a hundred thousand dollars for the course of the year. And again, that's driven by student need. And we actually have had to roll that need into the current school year for at least one because we've had students who have started after the start of the school year that require additional transportation services. So if you look at the total big picture here in fixed costs related to these items, health insurance and special education being the two biggest drivers on the slide in front of you, that is two point seven four percent increase year over year on the entire budget. So but for these items, if we did not have these drivers to contend with being as high as they are, our increase this year would actually be two point two three percent over last year. So every other item in the school district, salaries, supplies, utilities, everything, year over year, is a two point two three percent increase overall without these. If you go to the next slide, I'll show you what some of the others are. So I have new salaries and I have new in quotation marks for a reason. The salaries that are directly below here under the first two bullets, you see are, first in particular, unbudgeted additions, meaning these are additions that we have had to put into place since last year's budget was adopted. So as we began the current school year, we had to cut other parts of the budget and reallocate funds in order to pay these salary additions that were necessary. We needed an additional pre-K teacher for the growing number of three, four, and five-year-olds that have enrolled in our pre-K since the start of last school year. Those also required in that additional classroom. One teacher, two paraeducators are required for our students that are special education in addition to what we call regular education peers, which is necessary by state law for every special education child that comes into pre-K and needs services. We have to at least attempt to balance it out with a student who is not in need of services, a peer, so to speak, of the student with special needs. It's not a one-to-one ratio all the time, but to the best that we can, it should be. We're required by law to keep it at about fifty percent. So two special educators, sorry, one pre-K teacher and two paraeducators is for one pre-K classroom. The other additional five paraeducators were required for students who needed a one-to-one paraeducator that was unbudgeted in the year before. So students who moved into Avon that required these services, for example, after the budget was passed last year and/or newly identified students with significant enough needs that they need a one-to-one adult with them as a part of their individualized education plan. So those seven paraeducators added a hundred and ninety-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars onto our budget that had been unbudgeted for the current year. The pre-K teacher, a specialty certification in a shortage area in the state of Connecticut, came in at eighty thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars a year for the salary. And five additional teaching assistants for the number of kindergarten, another place that we have seen a very large increase in students registering. Again, part of this is the housing market in Avon and a number of families moving in year over year with kindergarten children. Our kindergarten class sizes are maxed out at both Roy Brook and Pine Grove. We're also out of space for kindergarten at both schools. We've had to put two classrooms together into one with two teachers in it. At Pine Grove, not kindergarten, but another class in order to open up a classroom for kindergarten because we've had so many students register in the previous year. So each one of those kindergarten classrooms needed another adult because of the numbers in them. And that's where these teaching assistants you see added in come from. That's another two hundred and six thousand dollars. It's a good problem to have, so to speak, in terms of the fact that we don't have significant declining enrollment in Avon in our school district, like many other towns do. There are a lot of younger families moving into town and continuing to grow the economy. But as a result, we're also growing the school district and in some cases, putting additional needs on the school district in terms of the student population. So all of these together, as you can see, sorry, let me back up. There is one additional position in this budget, and that is a school social worker that we have added in one school social worker to be able to split between our two elementary schools, Pine Grove School and Roy Brook School. In reality, when we discuss the needs, both schools had a need for one full-time at each school. However, with the budget increase that we were looking at already, given the drivers that have already shared, we made the decision to put one position for a social worker in, in this coming budget year, split it between the two schools and see how that worked, do the best we could with one individual, and move forward. Part of the reason for that, for anyone who may not know why we utilize social workers in public schools, in large part, it's again due to student needs by their individualized education plans. So clinical counseling that may be required while at school is typically done by a social worker. In addition, there are other mandates that are in place from the state related to our social and emotional learning, teaching, and curriculum that our social workers, school psychologists, and school counselors assist in carrying out. And we are incredibly strained district-wide right now, to be fair, but particularly at the elementary level. If you, if we think about it in this way, at the high school, we have two full-time social workers that are busy all day, every day, and sometimes after hours. The high school has just shy of a thousand students in it. Pine Grove Elementary School has, I believe, seven hundred and eighty, seven hundred and sixty, seven hundred and sixty-eight, seven sixty-eight, I think? Seven hundred and sixty-eight students at Pine Grove, which is only K to four. And with as many students at that age group as we have and as many of them with the demonstrated needs that we have, we could not move another year without a social worker. As a matter of fact, in the year that we're in, we are starting to contract out services at this point that were, again, unbudgeted for to be able to meet some of the student needs at Roy Brook and at Pine Grove. Finally, unified spring coaches. I'll mention, not because it's a, a, quote, ton of money, it's approximately six thousand dollars. If I look back at my notes, yes, six thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars is the stipend for a unified sports coach. Unified sports is a way that we allow our special education students who are more significantly impacted to be able to play sports. Of course, all students can play on our regular teams, but we do have some students who are significantly impaired and therefore unable to participate with their peers on our regular interscholastic athletics. So I believe the second year that I was here, I think we did nineteen twenty. I know we started it after my time here. We put in the unified sports program at Avon High School. We had not had it, at least at any time in recent memory, because we had so many students and their parents interested in it. We began with basketball, that has gone very well. And we looked to add in track and field this year due to student needs and an interest. So a stipend for a coach there, six thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars. Those are the two positions in this budget. One is a social worker that are new, one is a social worker, and one is for unified track. Next slide, please. Just another way of looking at it visually. As I think Mr. Wilheim said, we are mostly people. Most of the budget is driven by people that are working with students. So we are consistently at or around eighty percent of our budget distribution being salaries and benefits. The tuition you see, next line down that I previously mentioned. Transportation, I believe we've gone through all of these. Utilities at two point one percent. We've actually seen decreases in some of our utilities and that has worked to our benefit a bit to offset here, but not by a ton. Supplies also and equipment. We have reduced supplies throughout the entire school district as another way to try to balance this budget, given the increase that we saw from these drivers. Should mention, I think I neglected to at the beginning, that the way we do the budget every year, including this year, is to start out with what we would call a zero-based budget. We don't start by rolling anything over. We start with where we are and move forward from there. We move forward the salaries first of the people that we know that we need to maintain, given the numbers of students. And then we go line by line through the entire budget, which is thousands pages that you can find online. It's not entirely in the printout here, obviously, tonight, but it is available online and through us or the town. We go through every single line and determine whether or not it's needed again. Can we reduce it or does it need to be increased before we land here, before we land with the board and ultimately here tonight? Again, just another way to look at this, both as the comparison to last year, twenty-three, twenty-four, what we are proposing in twenty-four, twenty-five, the dollar increase and the percent that that is, what that reflects of the overall budget and what it reflects of the overall budget increase. You see the percent increase at the bottom there being five point oh six. Won't get into it unless there are questions, because I'm sure there might be questions on the town side also. But that's the difference between the net and the gross budget increase. That's why it's five point oh six on this slide, not four point nine seven. That's the gross. If you go to the next one for me, please. Again, just another way to look at it, for those who are better with a graphic version. And one, thank you. Just end again with where we started. We have a gross increase of five point oh six, less the funds back from the town, which we had discussed previously with Town Manager. And I believe Town Manager discussed with Town Council at the end of each year. If we have funding left over, we return that to the town. And the town is appropriating a portion of that back to us this year, a portion of what we gave back last year to this year, is one way to continue to offset the cost of this budget. That's a hundred thousand, hundred thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which brings our net budget increase down to sixty-five million five hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Should say, not increase, that is net budget, excuse me. That's a typo on this, if I saw it before you even mentioned it, that's a typo on the slide, pardon me. Thank you. And an overall four point nine seven percent. Again, thank you for your time. Happy to answer any and all questions. We have all of the other numbers with us here tonight, but that was the overview for you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Bridget. As if you ran the numbers, and I'm not sure any of you are working with pocket calculators, but the Board of Ed budget is between two-thirds and three-quarters of our budget. So it's a, it's a big portion of the budget. And just so that everybody knows, the superintendent has to be very good at balancing the budget because Board of Ed members have unlimited personal liability if they spend more than what has been authorized. So the superintendent is very good at making sure that never happens. So she watches it like a hawk. I was also one of the people many years ago that said, social workers, why do we have social workers? Well, the short answer is, I became a believer that kids can't learn if they can't think. There's a lot of depression around now and it's terrifying when you see it in action. So it's like they can't learn if they're hungry. We have free lunch for people who need it. Now, thank goodness in Avon, not many do, but some do. So that just shows that the, the mission of the Board of Ed has to be slightly broadened in light of the realities of today. Everybody knows the issues about, you know, young kids and they're having more depression problems after COVID than I remember having when I was a kid. In terms of insurance, we all are self-insured. So we try to have as much money put in the self-insurance plan as the actuaries tell us to put in because it is not a strategy, and I don't play craps, but to say daddy needs a new pair of shoes and hope you keep rolling those dice and that's going to be how we're going to make sure that we balance the budget. Eventually, you will roll snake eyes and then you'll go, oh, my goodness, we're in trouble. Now, we do have stop-loss premiums, so that if any one person has what we would call a catastrophic event, it gets covered outside of our plan, we don't have to pay for it. But one person with a million-dollar claim is less troublesome than ten people with a hundred thousand dollar claim. And in light of health problems today and health costs today, you have to keep a close eye on that. So that's one of the other things that we need to make sure is fully funded. So at this point, I get to do our presentation. And I would like to, first of all, thank my fellow board members for their assistance because without their help, we wouldn't be able to get it done. We are stronger together as a team. And I want to thank each one of you for being part of the team. Each person has not a pre-assigned, but a unique viewpoint and a role that they play. And sometimes it varies from meeting to meeting, but they're all collegial. They all advocate for what they believe is right, and I respect them all for that. And thank you very much for your help because I know that it is not easy sometimes. All right. I think I have slides, otherwise I'm lost. All right. This is the overall requested budget summary. There's property tax and assessments. Then we have non-property tax revenues. Those can be building permits, filing revenues for recording deeds and mortgages and the like, and we get a piece of that. So that is the amount that is the total revenue that we get. Some of it's anticipated, some of it, sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower. Guess what? This year, we did really good on interest income because it was practically flat before, not so flat anymore. So will, will that income reduce next year? I'll bet you it does because I'll bet you interest rates will go down. So we have our town requested spending at four and a quarter percent. And then I have to get my glasses in the right place. Life is terrible when you need bifocals. And it doesn't help on the, the plans when I get it because I can't read that small. We have capital improvement financing. We have the, I'm going to have to get closer, I apologize. Bring the microphone with me. We have the sewers, which have to be maintained, but there are sewer revenues. We have debt service required spending and the Board of Ed request. All right. Hit the next one, I'm close enough so it'll be overrated. All right. So we have to balance the requested amount of spending for services with the level of revenues necessary to pay for those requests. So the current proposed budget is a three point three zero tax increase. So even though there are some amounts that are higher for various things, we in fact have done well in terms of finding other sources of revenue. If I could have the next slide, please. So we consider, and there's a laundry list. The best interest of the town as a whole. And we, I always say that there are two different types of residents, those that types of residents, those that are lifers, hello, that may be me, since I think I've been in town for now, what is it, sixty years? There you go. There are the people that move in because they want a great education for their kids and they move out. We have to consider everybody. We can't favor one side or the other. We take input from the town council, the Board of Ed, interaction with residents. We will have the workshop on Wednesday, but there will be possibility for questions, public hearing comments, economic conditions, tax demands for other levels of government, estimates of revenue services and projections, future borrowing requirements, and voting history, because what has happened in the past informs us as to what might happen this time around. So we're not going to come out with a ten percent budget. Our revenue options are somewhat limited, contrary to New York City. No local income tax, no local sales tax. You may have noticed there's a ten percent sales tax in New York City. We're not doing that in Avon and we can't. No tobacco, alcohol, gas, or hotel taxes. Once again, other places you'll see it happens. So we do property tax, which is based on assessments, and licenses, permits, fees, and grants. That's it. The grand list is the list of taxable property in the town. It's the four items. Primarily real estate, personal property. Businesses will do personal property, individual people, except for cars, generally don't. Motor vehicles and vacant land. Your property is assessed at seventy percent of the fair market value. So if your house is worth a hundred thousand dollars, and I remember that was a lot of money, you're only assessed at seventy percent of that. So, next slide. This is the grand list. Now, we did a revamp, which means that everything's been reevaluated. So everybody has a new number, and we'll get into that in a little bit. There's the net grand list, which is a little bit before the Board of Assessment Appeals, so that can be, reduce that number, because someone says, my house isn't really worth a million dollars. All right, it may not be, in which case we reduce the number. But growth of the grand list was relatively small. We're not fully built out in Avon, but we're getting close. Next slide. There you go. Calculating the mill rate. So I always tell people, you can't just simply say, oh, there you go. Obviously, I have to stand somewhere differently. So because the value of the properties have changed, as they say, it's like with your mileage on a car, you may get higher or lower rates. So if the value of your property goes up, because the mill rate is still lesser, unless it goes up more than the average, you may not have a property tax increase. But overall, the budget is currently three point three percent. Next slide. This is the grand list, changes in fiscal years. The, I'll go to the next slide. All right. Mill rate comparison, that shows you how much the mill rates have changed. I forgot, there is a slide that shows the allocation between the different types of properties. So by way of example, office properties, because guess what, after COVID, people figured out, people don't have to go into work, they can work remotely, or they can share office space. Value of commercial buildings has somewhat dropped. Well, there you go. Thank you very much. So that's only, that's, it actually has dropped. Residential has gone up. Condominiums in particular have also gone up. Motor vehicles, they went up dramatically, because guess what, during COVID, the price of used cars went up and we couldn't buy new cars, because nobody had chips. Really, who figured this was ever going to affect us in Avon? Why would global supply chains affect us? Guess what? They did. So this year, the amount of, the value of the motor vehicles is going to drop. There's a cap on motor vehicles, so they're going to be taxed at the full rate of other things, because the theory was, we try to equalize it across all towns. Next slide. So we're expecting there's going to be an increase of intergovernmental grants. We're expecting the amount of licenses, permits, fees, it's going to be roughly the same. Eight thousand dollar drop, I don't think is, is a hundred million dollar budget, a lot. Charges for current services, slightly down. Other revenues from investment interest, we think it's going to be up, but it may drop if the Federal Reserve drops our interest rates, depending on when they drop them. They drop them in this, in next year, great, doesn't, it doesn't affect us as much. If they come out in the next meeting, which I think is in June, we may lose a lot more money. Go ahead, next. That's the total amount, a hundred and sixteen billion dollars. Must admit, the first time I saw that, I went, oh my God, how could the number be so big? But this is how we break it up and we talk about, this is the amount of funding needed. And so this is how we get to the tax increase of three point three percent. Go ahead, next one. Depending upon a house, so the question is, what, what is my house going to go up? And so in light of the proposed tax, recognize that the assessment of your house may have changed. It may go up, could go down. And by the way, if you're unhappy, I'll tell you that there is an appeal process. So three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar house, it's going to be two hundred and fifty-four dollars a year. Now, recognize, as I say, looking back to mileage for your car or mileage per gallon, your experience may differ, particularly if you were asking for insurance, and your insurance goes up a lot. All the numbers are there, so you can see, and if you've got a house worth a million, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, the increase is seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. And don't forget, your assessment value is seventy percent of the average value. And you can pull that from the website. Go ahead and get the next one. This is the unassigned fund balance. We have talked about this at length in the Board of Finance. The original, shall we say, best estimate was that if you have ten percent, that makes all the bonding companies happy. And so that they like that you have a rainy day fund, so if something happens and if it's, if it's not repeating, you can tap the rainy day fund. So ten percent used to make them happy. That was what gave us our great bond rating, which means that our interest rate for borrowing is lower. They would like more. So we have in fact increased the value of that and we're trying to increase it further. The goal is to get to, I believe, Brandon, correctly, fourteen percent? Fifteen percent? Got it. So there you go. Spending trends, I think it's all fairly self-explanatory, and you can see that the number divides fairly consistently between Board of Ed and the town. Next slide. That's the Board of Ed operating budget, their share of debt service, because among other things that we do, we do, you know, significant repairs, fix roofs, build additions to schools and things like that, because Avon is considered relatively wealthy. The state chips in less for us. Okay, that's fine. This is the count of Avon and sewers. Overall percent of the budget, operating is twenty, almost twenty-seven percent. Debt service is relatively small. What we try to do is when we, we don't borrow willy-nilly, but you also don't go out and say, I like that pretty, I'll pick on fire engines, because that's simple. You say, I don't like that, I like that fire engine in the window, I'd like to buy one. Well, they start at half a million dollars. The lead time, you can't go to the fire truck store and say, yes, I'll take that one, and plunk down your half million dollars. By the way, that's for a very stripped model. So the lead time is like two or three years to do that. So what we do is we decide, how much can we set aside, how much borrowing can we do on it? So that's one of the things that we will set aside in terms of capital improvements. Fire engine trucks don't become high mileage. They also last for twenty years. And those firefighters, they polish those trucks and take care of them like you wouldn't believe. So something with twenty thousand miles on it, it's probably a very old machine, they all look like they're top-tipped level. But at some point, like anything else, after a period of time, you reach their maximum limit. Next slide. This is the, this is the summary, and it's available in the packet. And next one. Next steps. All right. We have the budget workshop on Wednesday. So it's, as we say, a public meeting, which means a meeting in public. The Board of Finance will be chatting amongst ourselves. You get to watch us. You won't have an opportunity to ask questions, but like this is being livestreamed today, that will be livestreamed as well. I'm sorry you couldn't fix it, so it can be interactive when you're online, but we've changed the way we do business. Hopefully, people think it's for the better. We're not doing this simply here in the Avon Public Library, there is a wider world that's watching us. So the Board of Ed has televised our meetings for some time. We haven't quite gotten there on the Board of Finance, but we're working on it. The annual budget meeting is on May sixth at seven PM. It will be livestreamed as well. And then the budget referendum, sorry guys, you have to show up and vote, is May fifteenth at the Avon Senior Center, six AM to eight PM. And unless, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe tomorrow's the primaries. So if you want to go out and vote for the primaries, for who should be your candidate, I would urge you to go and vote, because if you don't use your franchise, someone else will use it for you. So we always encourage, and when it comes out to voting for the, the budget referendum, we don't tell you how to vote. You can disagree with us, you can vote against what we want. We just tell you to vote, so we understand where you are and how you feel. Hopefully, everybody will be able to support what we come up with. But part of the process tonight is, you get to ask questions. So I think we've got a microphone and a person to run around with it, so that the people who are not here can actually hear you. So, does anyone have a question? Well, sure. Comments are allowed. Let's, let's get you a microphone, so that you can... You're on. Well, why don't I hand you this microphone, it's a little better. And if you could just state your name, so I, I know who to call you.
My name is Diane Hunade, and I live at five fifteen Huckleberry Hill Road. And recently, very recently, it has come to my attention that the federal government and the state are reducing the funds that are available for the meals on wheels and congregate meals at our senior centers, not only in our town, but all the towns around us. And those cuts are substantial. And our, we have, for instance, I haven't been able to take opportunity for these programs, but I have friends and neighbors who have. And some of the people that go, they go for the socialization, some go for the well-planned meals, and some go because they need the meal. And so I have not had good opportunity to review this budget carefully, but I would like the town council and Board of Finance prior to your next work session to explore exactly how much addition to the social services budget would be, I know y'all are shocked I'm saying this, the, the social services budget, to make certain that in our town, that people can continue to enjoy that social service. And I know that the town council would have to speak with social services directors and others to get that information, but it, it is going to, in Farmington, I have a letter from the people in Farmington, it will impact sixty-four percent of the people that they service. That's astronomical, and I don't think the people in Avon support that. I just think that these people have lived in town over fifty years, and they've paid taxes all those years, and they've supported this community in a lot of ways. And so I just want that to be really looked at and reconsidered if we need to increase that portion of the town council's budget. The other question I have is, when you said the work session, do you mean next Wednesday?
This coming Wednesday.
A week from today?
No, no.
Tomorrow.
Two days. Two, two days, sorry. Tuesday, Wednesday, two days.
Thank you. Well, that's, I know you're surprised, but that's all I have to say.
I had to recover the mic, because otherwise, the people livestreaming won't hear me, and while I speak loud enough for this room, I'm not loud enough for the internet. Diane, thank you very much. I know you've been very active for a long time. I don't know the answer to your question off the top of my head, but for Wednesday, we'll make sure we know it. But thank you for raising the concern, because if people don't tell us what they know and ask us questions, then we're less informed. So you're part of what makes us stronger. Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Mandel. You mentioned early voting. Is there a line item for how much the early voting will cost this year?
Brandon, you happen to know that off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head, but it's in the book.
Short answer is, we will pull that and we'll get an answer to you. But the early voting actually was a substantial amount of work on the registrars. And in case you haven't noticed, there was early voting for the primaries, so if you'd been there like today, you could have early voted. That was sort of a, in effect, and they may quibble with me about my choice of words, in effect, the dry run for the presidential election, because if we can handle a primary without a problem, great, then we can when we have a larger turnout for a presidential election. If there are bugs in the system, we will certainly work it out. But there was a fair bit of cost to do that, and I don't believe we got special reimbursement from the state, but we will find that answer out. And you want to talk about that, because you're one of the registrars?
Yeah, I guess so.
Hang on a second, we get the...
Anne Clark, Thirteen Year Road. We did get a grant from the state for the early voting. We got a thousand, ten thousand dollars. Every town got ten thousand dollars. So Hartford got ten thousand dollars and Lee Elsberg ten thousand dollars. I think we're going to pretty well spend that ten thousand dollars the last four days. I have not seen the figures. I, all I know, I heard today, we, we had a hundred and sixty people come to early voting, so I, whoever did it, I thank you, because you are right. We, we looked at it as a dry run for November, because in November, we will be in the office for fourteen days, two weekends, and every day in between. So it's, it's stabbing, it's different kind of ballots, different ballots are different than, than the other ones, so it's not cheap.
Brandon, did you have an answer to...
Yeah.
Save the microphone, Brandon.
I did. Just sort of back of the envelope. So if you, if you look at your budget book, you'll see under general government, there are two tabs. One is registrar of voters, the other is elections and referenda. So under registrars of voters, there was about an eight thousand dollar increase. To the registrar of voters stipends, which takes into account the additional work and time... $30,445.
And by way of example, for those of you who think we get paid astronomically for this, all the members of the Board of Finance work without pay, all the members of the Town Council work without pay, all the members of the Board of Education work without pay. So people are donating their time, and in all honesty, I think that's the best part of what makes this all work, because people who care enough to put their, shall we say, money where their mouth is, to not just talk the talk, but to walk the walk, it wouldn't, town government for Avon would not work without all these volunteers. Now, I know we have a lot of other volunteers on another, a lot of other boards, and I think the Board of Assessment Appeals gets $25 a year, if my memory's correct. Brandon, I think, is nodding. So I think they're the only ones who paid, and $25 a year ain't much. All right, further questions? Further questions going once. Up.
up from the state based on any pending legislation or past legislation that has been passed?
The short answer for that is yes. Now, can I be specific? Because they always put unfunded mandates on the towns. No, I can't give you anything. They haven't passed very many bills in the current General Assembly. Is it unlikely they're going to have something that has a huge material effect on us? I think probably not. But there will be things that happen that they'll ask us to pay for that we don't know. But I don't expect they will be material. At least, I'm not aware of any material ones at the present time. So, all right. As I proceed to run through, going twice, going three times. All right. So assuming there's no further discussion, I think not. The public hearing will be adjourned to the budget workshop on Wednesday, April 3. That's in two days, at 7:00 PM here, and it's going to be in the community room, and it's also going to be livestreamed by a go-to meeting. At the budget workshop, the Board of Finance shall make such revisions to the budget as it deems desirable, and shall recommend the budget, as revised, to the town, which will be, have its annual budget meeting on May 6 at 7:00 PM, once again, here, which will be live and via livestream. The recommended budget will be, because it has to be approved by the annual budget meeting, will be sent to referendum on May 15 at the Avon Senior Community Room, 635 West Avon Road, Avon, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM. So next meeting's here. The voting is going to be at the senior center, so don't get confused and go to the wrong place. So I would say thank you very much, and this is the one time I don't need to call for a vote to adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned.